Evening, and welcome to our Monday, December nineteen, twenty twenty-two voting meeting for Exeter Township School Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mr. Pike, can you please take roll call?
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
John Fidler. Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mill.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter. Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. In addition to our nine very festively dressed board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Christie Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Diane Scornavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Pike, who serves as our Business Administrator, as well as our Board Secretary. First on the agenda will be a presentation. Christie, did you want to introduce them? Thank you.
I'm very pleased to say that Dr. Hoyt, Dr. Josh Hoyt from the BCIU is here with us this evening. He conducted a needs assessment for our K through six math programming, and he's here to share with the board his results and recommendations moving forward.
Exeter Township School Board members and community as well, and those watching online. First off, happy holidays to everybody, but I'm excited to talk to you tonight about the needs assessment for the K to six math program. A little bit about myself, if you're not familiar, I live in the district. I'm a parent of a fourth grader and a seventh grader. I've lived in the district since two thousand eight. So coming here from the IU, excited, but as a parent, I have a very vested interest in what's occurring with math in the district. I've spent twenty-two years in the field of math education as a teacher and administrator, central office administrator. I still teach math at RAC in their developmental math program. I also chair dissertations for students at Newman University who are doing dissertations in the field of mathematics or technology. So I do a lot of work in the county in mathematics, instructional technology. I work as a Google trainer, Apple trainer, Microsoft trainer, do a little dabbling in school G, school improvement. Whatever PDE comes down with at the IU, we do whatever we can to support the district. So my contact information is on here for the community or board members. So if you have any questions after the fact of clarification or things that I can do to help, I do delve into the community Facebook page sometimes when there are questions about math, you know, perhaps how to solve a math problem, or what is this topic we're working on? You know, I've certainly put my name out there, like, I'm happy to help in any way. So I certainly understand math is one of those topics that people either love hearing about or not so much love hearing about. But I am here tonight to just give you some perspective of some things that I've seen as somebody who's been in the field and certainly thinks that I can do to support anybody in the community. So what I did is provided a pretty extensive needs assessment form to collect some qualitative data from instructional staff, specifically around the primary resource in K to four, which is investigations. At the end of fourth grade, students then do move on to a different program called CPM. But really, it was to take a look at, first off, what does investigations look like? And what does instruction look like? A lot of different districts in the county that I support have a primary resource in elementary. It could be GoMath, could be Envision, could be Eureka. It's a name, a lot of them do almost the exact same thing. They just have their own specific little niche about them. But taking a look at investigation, some things that I have seen and some comments from others in the district, a lot of hands-on manipulatives, a lot of work with counterchips, base ten manipulatives, learning about ones, tens, hundreds, very, very powerful, a lot of research behind that. A multiple representational approach in Lehman's terms meeting, multiple different ways to solve a problem. That's what we want kids to do. We want kids to approach a situation not with a one-track mind, but think of different ways to get to that solution. A lot of peer interaction. The research supports that students enhance their conceptual understanding of mathematics when they talk about math. And I'm not saying, what answer did you get? More so, how did you do the problem? What strategy did you use? Did you do it differently? A lot of that is embedded. Another concept is there's a lot of cumulative practice, which those coming back from the pandemic, we've seen tremendous gaps at all levels. But the group that right now is the greatest need for cumulative review are nine- and ten-year-olds. Those are the ones who have the greatest need right now. I see that even as a parent of a daughter who's nine, will be ten in February. She knows her multiplication, but if you ask her, subtract twelve minus four, she will look at me like I have three heads. And if you've ever tried to work with your own children on anything, you know how that goes sometimes. So math in my household is probably a little bit different than in others' households. But also, a lot of instructional interactive games. Gamification in mathematics also very powerful. The idea of learning everything in the abstract, worksheet, 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 not effective, not effective at all. So a lot of games built within it. Now, some weaknesses, you will hear a lot about fact fluency. Fact fluency is one of these terms that if I was to ask all of you, what is fact fluency? I'd get a different response from all of you. I will talk a little bit about fact fluency a bit later on of ways to really promote that. The way that we learned facts growing up is different than how it's learned now, but there's a lot of research that supports why they're being learned the way they are right now and how to do it better. The scope and sequence does not match. Every single primary resource that's out there right now, I don't care what the name of it is, is written to the national core standards. And then what they start to do is go, well, here's where some things in PA fit. The language is very different, but they will tell you that it's PA correlated. But it's something you really have to take a fine look at because there are a lot of things that PA approved that are not in the national core, things like time and money. Majorly assessed concepts on the PSSA that are minimally found in these national core products. The scope and sequence does not necessarily match assessed concepts. So you will see sometimes that the assessments might be culture shock to a kid. The language might not, might be different. So what's assessed on the PSSA does not look what's like assessed on investigations in third and fourth grade. Because again, one's written to the PA core, another one's written to the national core, very different language. The assessments themselves, you will see that there's more of an idea of assessing a strategy than assessing a skill. And this is where I empathize with parents. If I have a child who truly understands the US traditional algorithm in addition, and they know it well, and the test question says add using partial sums, and I get it wrong, but I knew how to add using the US traditional, what am I teaching that child? I know you know how to do it, but you don't know how to do it that way. That's how you can really frustrate people. So there needs to be more of a focus on assessing a skill, not a strategy. And there's also not enough practice. Time is the one thing that every teacher asks more of. And just given the state of what we are, trying to be very creative with scheduling to try and support students that we find more practice in the classroom. As for curriculum deficits, again, fact fluency, something to talk about. As for best practices, the best practices are not to provide time assessments for fact fluency. The best practices to time assessments are on facts they already know. But giving a student a worksheet on a series of facts that they may not know and asking them to get it in a certain amount of time is not effective and actually can be very detrimental to the learning process for kids. So fact fluency is really an individualized approach where knowing what kids know and helping to develop that automaticity by timing them to develop that speed. So there's a lot of different strategies that are out there to promote fact fluency, some that you're using, whether they're extra math, DreamBox. But there's a lot in the earlier grades to do things like we did when we were younger. Those of you who are in their forties or older like me, playing games like Trouble. If you remember the game of Trouble, it teaches things like counting and one-to-one correspondence, counting and cardinality, kinesthetic, skip counting, addition, all of those skills. Chutes and Ladders is a hundreds grid where you're going up by double digits or down by double digits. All of those board games help to promote early mathematical literacy or numeracy concepts that now most kids are doing more of this on an iPad than they are doing those things. So one of the best manipulatives are things that parents can do at home with kids to work with fact fluency is to play board games. Junior Monopoly, a wonderful game to play with your kids because, hey, it's quick. So sometimes you know those board games, once you get above twenty minutes, as a parent, you're going, okay, how do we end this? But a lot of those are great, playing things like Uno, playing with a deck of cards, playing War, rolling dice. All of those things are great manipulatives to use to help to develop facts for kids. But there's too many kids who are getting flashcards, and they don't know those facts. And if you're a child and you sit there and you, nope, 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 it's not helping the kid whatsoever. So fact fluency is something you'll see as a recommendation of things that I'm going to help to offer to support that instructional away within the district. Time and money. It's no secret that these skills are disappearing, not necessarily of how to use them, but how we see them. PA still assess elapsed time with an analog clock, with Arabic numbers. Schools are the only place you find clocks with Arabic numbers. You go home, they're Roman numerals. Kids don't translate those. Everything's digital. They don't translate those things. Your kindergarten resource for investigations assumes that a child knows what a penny is, knows what a nickel is, knows what a dime is, and what a quarter is. Well, if you're familiar with, there's fifty-two different quarters in the US right now. So first off, try to teach a kindergarten, this is a quarter, but boys and girls, guess what? Flip it over, it looks fifty-two different ways. So trying to jump into dime, make change, as you make change from a dollar to two dollars to five dollars to ten to twenty, not having that background knowledge is something teachers are having to fill in. Problem solving, and I'm talking about problem solving at the level and rigor of a depth of knowledge three and four. If you think of depth of knowledge, they talk about levels one through four, four being much more rigorous. That's what the state assesses on our levels three and four. Most of what investigations assesses is at a two level at the highest. So some students are, many students are going to those constructed response questions with not having the tools in their toolbox to be successful on those open-ended questions. As for supplemental resources, the district is using a lot. You know, a lot of these are app-based, web-based, kinesthetic in nature, and a lot of these are built authentic as well. One of the things that you see is when you have quantity, the question you always ask yourself is, is there quality? No. So can you do, sometimes less is more. So if you're doing a lot of these different things as a teacher, it's very challenging to look at the data from, well, if I look at IXL and I look at DreamBox and now I pull from here, yes, you're doing all these things with kids, but are you getting the data you need to make instructional-informed decisions? As for assessments that are given, common teacher-created ones that are provided through the resource, lesson exit tickets, IXL diagnostics, STAR assessment, which is an assessment that is used to see if students are quote-unquote on level or if they need intervention. Again, that's a product that's written to the national core that says it's PA correlated. Again, it's an asterisk you always want to take a look at. I am a CDT statewide trainer, which is the Classroom Diagnostics Tools. That is a resource that's used for grades three and above, and those questions on the CDT are written by the same people who developed the PSSA Keystone Questions, very aligned. Ames Web, UBS for probes, and then assessments for Saxon Math. A lot of those are for special education students. As for the math assessment weaknesses, again, poorly aligned and designed. If you've ever worked with kids, you know that I don't care how old the child is, they write in size thirty-six font. They give them, they think the kids write in size ten font. So kids don't have enough space to work in the assessments themselves. And if you've ever worked in kids, you know, if you say, well, let me give you scratch paper. How many kids do you know put something here, but somehow from here to what you hand in, a miracle occurs and it's totally different? But that scratch paper may or may not come with, right? So giving kids enough space, you would be surprised how much anxiety it causes kids when they are unable to fit what they need to fit in for the teacher. And some students will not even solve a problem because they know they don't want to disappoint their teacher because it's not going to be legal. IXL and STAR not aligned, and what I mean by that is they're not fully aligned to Pennsylvania. So things to consider when you're looking at data and wondering, why are our students not growing? Why are our students not achieving proficiency? And in some cases, they're too short. Now, I'm not a proponent of a three-day test, but one of the things that you need to do with kids as they start getting to grades three and four is they do need to get used of the testing stamina of the PSSA. So if they're, if the first time they take a, an assessment that quote-unquote really means something, and that's the most rigorous assessment they've taken, we haven't put kids in the best position to be successful for a math assessment without as well. So going back to fact fluency here, these are all the different things that are being used for fact fluency in the district. Extra Math is app-based, a very popular one. It gives a student a probe to see where they're at, what do they already know? So if it's sake for addition example, it starts with zero plus zero, zero plus one, zero plus two, zero plus three. It does the community property and flips it. So do I understand that zero plus one is the same as one plus zero? Once I start to learn and know those facts and I master them, I get harder and harder and harder. And yes, it is timed, but it's timed on things that they know already. So do I know that with automaticity? It's not just random facts. Rocket Math is more, I call it the paper version of Extra Math, very paper-intensive. Students are at different levels, an A level, a B level, C level. They get probes, and then from there, they move along. My, I used this when I was a math supervisor in another district. My only caveat about Rocket Math is sometimes Rocket Math forgets they're dealing with kids and not COGS. So just because the directions say X, sometimes you might look at a student who gets so stressed about the fact that there's a time that if you can pull that student aside and say, say them to me orally. If they can do that orally, move them on. But too many kids get hung up and get stressed out because they didn't get written in that time measure. So a lot of these things, I always tell teachers, use your professional judgment. And that's sometimes not, teachers do want to find line with things. But with some of these programs, they are so specific in their criteria, you do have to look at things for kids, see, is that really a definitive mark of where they're at? DreamBox is one that I am very fond of. I like that it looks at kids, looks at their learning style, if somebody who's very visual, somebody who's very kinesthetic, or somebody who just likes your typical abstract problems, those are the problems that are geared towards me. But as far as best practices go with fact fluency, it should be done every day. And it should be done, when you think about in kindergarten, what is fact fluency in kindergarten? It's understanding what numbers are. There's too many kids who are being moved on to learn their facts without understanding. If I can add three plus three and get six, if I don't understand that that six is also four plus two and five plus one and one plus five, memorizing three plus three does nothing for me. I equate fact fluency to what spelling bee is. You know, if you can spell a word by memorizing it, but don't understand what it means in the context of a sentence, that doesn't mean anything to you. So if I memorize a fact, but I don't understand what that fact means, that's not helping. So more of a fluidity with numbers and an understanding of those numbers is more about what fact fluency is than just memorizing a series of facts. So that's why building it as a station, building it as part of your, of the lesson, is something that's critical for that. There's nothing wrong with students using calculators for facts, if that helps to build that. But certainly, this starts in kindergarten, and it's something, like I said, at the earlier grades, the younger ones, these are things that can be done by doing board games. It helps to build fact fluency for that. But just one caveat I like to tell people is this is going, you get sucked in a Target when you go to those bins in the beginning. They have all those flashcards. Buying those and just sitting there without purpose is not going to help a child. What will help a child is if you learn what the ones they do know, those are the ones you start doing with them to help to build the speed and work on other things with the kids to help them to get those facts that they know how to do. So that's something I definitely would love to work with the teachers with. For math homework, this is the philosophy in the district. Some say there should be, some say there shouldn't be. Homework should, if it's given, should be able to be done in about fifteen minutes and should be able to be done independently. Homework, it should be a concept of things I know how to do. And there's a lot of math homework that comes home where kids don't know what to do, how to do it, and then parents have a tough time helping their kids as well. But the purpose of homework is to reinforce instruction, not to teach instruction. So things to consider with that. I also hear that it teaches responsibility. Homework does not teach a child responsibility. That is not what the purpose of homework is. The purpose of elementary homework is not to prepare them for middle school. The purpose of middle school homework is not to prepare them for high school. And the purpose of high school homework is not to prepare them for college. That is not what homework is meant for. Parent feedback, lack of feedback provided. They like the old math. I will tell you, that is just, the phrase of old math is one of these things that have gotten a little blown out of proportion. We still do teach the US traditional different algorithms, whether it's addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. What has changed is that math has become more text-based, a lot more word problems, and they are teaching kids some other strategies based upon research that's out there with things around place value. But parents, I can, I empathize. If you haven't had experience with partial sums, partial differences, partial quotients, I certainly understand that. So, you know, one of the things you'll see in here is that providing support for parents is certainly something I'm willing to offer as well. But there's a lot of stress. Math homework at home is one of the largest stressors for academics in school right now, is math homework. So for the recommendations, just to finish up here, one of the things that I'm recommending for the district is first off, professional development on small group instruction. There is still a pretty significant population that focuses on whole group instruction for kids. So supporting with differentiated instruction and working with what does rotational learning look like in a math class? Because they're doing that in the language arts classroom right now through balance literacy. Professional development on what the instruction of math facts and embedded problem solving looks like to support the teachers. Taking a look at, and I'm not saying necessarily completely rebuild, but retool the grade level assessments so that they do truly align to Pennsylvania anchors, assessments and skills, as well as that scope and sequence. You will see in a lot of these resources, many of the measurement modules are the end-of-year topics. Those are heavily assessed topics on the state test. So every school district has to pull that content out, filter it in, so they get it done before March, which completely causes distress and fidelity of what the program was set up for. So just things to consider. Support with math data. You know, they collect a lot of data in the math classroom. Supporting them with, what does that data look like? How can we use that data to develop groups? How can we do that to support students moving forward? One of the things that came out is the new teachers would love to have professional development on how to teach mathematics and what investigation looks like, as well as providing support with parents, for parents. One of the things that I would be interested in doing is coming in to do learning walks in K to four during tier one instruction, which is the, when the lesson is being delivered in the classroom, just to take a deeper dive into, what does it look like? What does it sound like? And what information can I offer for there? I think it would also be beneficial for horizontal and vertical articulation to help with transition and the commonality of instruction. Now, what I mean by that is I'm not saying everybody should be teaching the exact same thing every, the same day. What I mean by that is it is essential that when students leave fourth grade, whether they're from Jacksonwell, Lorraine, or Watten, that those fifth-grade teachers at Reifton know what kids are coming up with, know what was instructed, so that if I am a fifth-grade teacher and most of the standards for fourth and fifth grade say, apply and extend understandings of, well, if the child doesn't have the foundation, how do you apply and extend an understanding of when you're not even sure what the foundation is? Also giving those teachers times, again, to get together to see, what are things that we're seeing this year? Because sometimes skill deficits from year to year differ. So each year, are students struggling with fractions right now? Yes, they are. Third grader, fourth graders tremendously are struggling with fractions right now and are trying to apply and extend those understandings of. So fourth-grade teachers across the district are going to have to spend a lot of time on intervention remediation around fractions. I can tell you that right now. So giving that, that time to support students as they transit, especially transitioning from investigations in fourth grade to an entirely different program in fifth grade with CPM. And as far as actual math focal points, counting and cardinality, right? Kindergarten is the only time that standard is taught. So if a child does not go to kindergarten, they never receives counting and cardinality, which is the fundamental basis of learning mathematics. The students who are not proficient on their Keystone Algebra one exam can go back to the fact that they were never proficient in counting and cardinality. They run out of fingers and toes. They go to a calculator, they plug in things that they're just plugging in and have no conceptual understanding whatsoever. Numbers and operation in base ten is just a fancy way of saying place value. Most people you talk to will say, kids struggle with fact fluency. They don't know how to add, subtract, multiply, and divide double-digit numbers. Has nothing to do with computation, and it has everything to do with a lack of a conceptual understanding in numbers and operations in base ten. And numbers and operations in fractions that I mentioned. Fractions set the stage. If you want to know why our seventh-grade students struggling right now, it's because you have lack of complete understanding of what a fraction is. Because they don't understand how that translates to ratios and proportions in sixth grade, which is the fundamental basis for slopes, slope intercept, and all of those seventh-grade concepts right now. I can see that because I have a seventh-grade son. I know what to do with him. But, you know, you see that that, that concept, some of those things, fifth, sixth grade were, I don't say they were missed, but they were instructed in a very different way due to the situation that we were in. So you will see that a lot of seventh-grade teachers are going to have to do a lot of instruction on concepts that have nothing to do with the seventh-grade curriculum and in fact have a lot to do with the fourth and fifth grade curriculum, which I know causes a lot of undue stress. But that stress can get much worse when you have twenty-five students sitting in front of you who are so stressed because they have no idea what they're doing and are going home and stressing their parents who don't necessarily know how to support them with algebraic concepts. So those are a lot of things that I looked at, and I'm certainly willing to support you from, from the intermediate unit. I hope that was not too long. But, you know, there's, I would still love to continue to work with to gain more knowledge by coming into the classroom and doing whatever I can to support the district moving forward with math. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions from anyone that has them. I may not know the answers right now, but I will certainly do what I can to get you the answer if I don't know.
Josh, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Did you have a chance to look at our remedial programs for math? I mean, what we do for students who, let's say, are starting to fall behind and maybe are candidates for some tiered intervention of some kind? Did you see anything that is happening right now? Is that in place? Is it satisfactory?
So one of the things that we, that we took a look at was, is, one of the things I asked about was an MTSS framework for math. And anybody will tell you that before you can truly have that functional model, your tier one instruction has to be completely solidified. That is why I asked about going in to just make sure that tier one is solidified. I do know that students are trying to get whatever best intervention they can. Sometime that's being done on the course of the lesson. I know myself as a parent, I asked about that because I had concerns with my own daughter. But, you know, I think that is something the district is definitely looking at moving forward in a much more structured model. I don't want to speak for Dr. Haller, but I think right now we really want to make sure, is what we're teaching in tier one as high quality it needs to be so that students don't need to receive that tier two, tier three, or down the road instruction? But there are resources, there are techniques that are being used, resources provided to support students who are not where they need to be right now.
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to get a sense of the depth of your analysis. I mean, have you gone in and actually observed our teachers or have you basically just examined the curriculum that we use?
I looked at the curriculum and got feedback from teachers. My, my next phase that I asked about was being able to come in and actually go a, a lot deeper with this to, to see what it looked like. See what things look like instructionally, get into classrooms so that I can really provide more information moving forward.
And your, and your, and your focus is right now on K to four?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Hoyt. You know, it seems to me over the last several years, we've seen this roller coaster of we change, we see if it works, we decide it doesn't, we pivot, you do something different. I'm glad to see that we're rebuilding the curriculum framework. I think it's something that's been needed for a long time. I guess my question for you was two part. One, how long does it take to see complete adaption by the educators? And then two, secondarily, after we have that complete adaption, how long does it take for us to see the results that you know, we hope to be looking for, at least an idea that we're going in the right direction or if we have to pivot it all and, and change some things?
Yeah, so when you think about resources, right now, a lot of districts are asking, should we get another resource? And a lot of my listeners, their decision, but my feedback then is don't do it. Don't, don't spend all that money on a new math resource where you're going to put you back at starting point zero. Uh, the research will tell you it takes three years for you to see any type of change or progress. Um, but now you fit that into what students went through. Um, your only true students that you can really get a gauge of right now are probably your kindergarten, possibly first grade students. Because of the rest of your students missed almost two years of core instruction. Um, and that is a tremendous Band-Aid, I want to say to put over a gaping wound right now mathematically. Um, but you know, if you really want to look at um and, and do an in-depth analysis of is what we are doing truly working? You look at your current kindergarten kids right now and see what do they look like in three, four years?
And how long does it take our, us to get our educators completely adapted to the new framework that we're going to be proposing?
I mean, you know, there, there's a lot of, there's a great structure there right now. I think it's just a matter of doing a little tweaks and all that. You know, the challenge for every district right now is that, you know, who you have today might necessarily be who you have tomorrow in there. You know, so you continue to make sure that math professional development is something that's built into the professional development cycle so that teachers do get that kind of support. Um, I think if your teachers who, uh, you know, one of the things that may, I don't want to speak again for Dr. Haller, sometimes I put my foot in my mouth, but is that, you know, one of the things you look at too is do you start departmentalizing in elementary? Like, do you have teachers in fourth and fifth grade who just teach math? That better enhances that, you know, adaption that you're looking at. Um, you know, do you continue to provide extensive support? All right, we got our data again from last year. Is, are some of these gaps the same and, and what can we do to change that? So I, I can't tell you, I wouldn't be able to give you a clear cut, this is how many years it takes, just because the sample changes every year. Um, but if you make it a focal point, you should see continued progress and growth with both teachers and students each year.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Let me look um at investigations and then all of the, the things that you put up there like extra math and rocket math and dream box. Um, do you see anything that we are just um, that we have too much? That we just keep giving teachers more and more and they're not able to maybe focus down and, and really, you know, practice the skills that need to be taught because there just is too much on their schedule. Did you see that at all?
Um, I wouldn't say by individual teacher, I just think that is challenging more so at the grade level span. If one teacher is using extra math and in another grade level, another teacher is using um dream box. When you come together at a grade level meeting or a data meeting, you're not, you're measuring apples to oranges right now. So you know, one of the things I talk about commonality is maybe sticking with, hey, listen, this as a grade level, this is what we want to go with. That's great, but so that way you can help to support that. Because what you don't want ha- to happen is, is with those students who are in second grade is go to third grade and the third grade can, teacher can cherry pick which teacher which kids have. And, and that very well happens in many, many places. So like I said, I, I focus more on quality than quantity. I wouldn't be able to give you a specific answer on that right now because that's what I'd like to do to really come in to see into the classroom itself. This was much more of just a, a qualitative needs analysis, um just, just to see what are, what were some larger umbrella things to take a look at. Uh, I think moving forward, we want to take a look at and really honing in on some things so that we can make this um a lot more fine tuned to support the future forward.
I have another question too about investigations. Um, I use Eureka, so we, there's materials there that um can go home for the parents. That it kind of explains the lesson and the language that teachers use. Has investigations developed anything like that that we could ha- have for families?
So the only thing that they really have right now is the upcoming lesson home letter, which um or unit letter that comes home and that I will be honest with you is, is a waste of paper. It doesn't tell much. Um, they don't have as much anywhere the, the parental resources that, that Eureka has, I will say that. Eureka was one of, since Eureka's fairly newer, they were, they made parental support a, a big focus of theirs, so.
Um, Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Um, two, two uh facts from two years ago, I'm still trying to understand. I know you didn't look at the history here, but maybe I can, I can help you so you can help us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, um, a member of our board reported that I believe uh the board member's son was in sixth grade. This is two years ago. And had not learned how to do long division. Is that as astonishing to you as it was to me?
Um, well, long division isn't necessarily a concept that is sixth grade specific. They build on that. It's actually started to instruction in fourth grade. It's a, it's division and the, the, the long division algorithm that begins in fourth grade. And like I said, they apply and extend the understandings of, so they, they build on that. But I do know that long division is a, a part of it. Cause like I said, as a parent in the district, I saw what my son who's in seventh grade came home with. He was doing long division and building on that, going from like tens divided by ones to hundreds divided by ones up through the various grades.
Thanks. Um, another astonishing bit of information, two years ago, uh, we were told uh based on test scores that more than half of seventh graders couldn't do math at grade level. Now, two years ago was just at the start of the pandemic, so we can't really hang that on the pandemic. But my, what I'm still wrestling with is where, where were we? Uh, to quote an executive I used to work with for many years ago, who was minding the store? In other words, where were we at grades one, two, three, four, five and six? To suddenly find out that in seventh grade, more than half the kids couldn't do math at grade level? Can you, and I realize this is just, I'm kind of spitting this out at you and, because I'm still wrestling with it. How can that happen? Shouldn't there be some sort of assessment each year that says, okay, now our kids are ready for second grade? Now our kids are ready for third grade? And then suddenly, seventh graders, half of them can't do math at grade level?
Well, I think a couple of things. If you look at it from two years ago, two years ago, a seventh grader assumes they had investigations since kindergarten, which wasn't true. So um, the other thing is that would have been true two years ago for a seventh grader is that they would have been in the quote unquote PA Core standards for six years, also not a true statement. So those kids from a couple of years ago were certainly grouped into a, um, a unique thing where they were thrown into new standards, new resources. Probably starting around like second grade or so is, is really challenging for them. But I, I, you know, seventh grade math, I think is, is the one where you definitely see um a tremendous drop across the entire state. Uh, um, that is where you start to see kids start to level in different places, whether you have your students in Algebra one, your students in pre-algebra advanced. So there's like five, some, some schools have six different tracks for seventh grade. Um, not necessarily I'm a proponent of, but um, you know, I, I think it's, one of the things that, that is unique to this district is that you do go from a resource K to four to a completely different resource five to six. Those resources are not aligned to each other. So if, if, uh, that's what I talked about, if you don't have that vert- vertical articulation built in for fifth and sixth grade teachers, no kind of language schema, strategies and all that are coming up. And, and they're just teaching things without any of that prerequisite knowledge. You know, in some cases you are trying to fit a square through a circle holder and that's, that's not what's best for kids. So um, that's why I'm a proponent of the CDT at, at the seventh grade level because it tells you how are students doing performing against Pennsylvania standards and anchors?
And CDT is?
That classroom diagnostics tool, that's the assessment that, it's not really an assessment, but it's, it's a diagnostic tool that um is developed by Pennsylvania educators and it goes through the same vetting process that the PSSA questions go through. So the language, the schema, all those things match. It's truly Pennsylvania specific. Not saying that's silver bullet, if it was that, it's the case, everybody would be using it. Um, but it certainly does give you a much more clearer picture on how a student is doing in October, November against not only seventh grade standards and anchors, but also where are there gaps and holes in fourth, fifth and sixth grade content? From this, I can start to fill some of those things in.
And is, is uh, I, I don't know how much farther you're going to go with us, that's up to Dr. Haller. But it seems to me that what we need here, or one of the things we need is a way to look at the student each year so that the next sort of half generation of students doesn't cruise along for six years and then suddenly in seventh grade, they don't know how to do math. Do you have any thoughts on how we can?
Well, yeah.
How we can do that?
No, I mean, there's, there's a district I just did a, a needs assessment analysis for and they have a, a virtual data wall of all their kids and how they're doing on all their assessments, ELA, science, math. You could pull up any student, take a look at where they are, where they're projected to be. Who are those students who are targeted for, for this kind of support? This kind, this is what they're getting for that kind of support. That's the direction that you really need to start going in so that A, you can make sure you're giving kids at the moment what they need. But also how it can inform you for, all right, moving forward, these are things that need to be done for our third graders who are currently in first grade. So um, data now is so much more important in the math classroom. But it's not just the data, it's the quality of that data. And that's where I go back to, if they're using different things in different grade levels, you're, you're not able to really pull that in and get a really clear picture on that. Um, so you know, I think really honing in on here are, instead of seven or eight different things to look at to give kids, here are some couple, but this is what we're going to do as a grade level move forward so we can get that picture, support the kids, give them that tier two instructions that we need, whatever it is, so that we can continue to support those kids moving forward.
Well, the other, the other thing that's, I guess is the other part of the heartbreaking aspect of this is that those seventh graders who couldn't do math two years ago are now in ninth grade. And I remember ninth grade math is like, it was like we were suddenly in graduate school. I didn't know what the hell was going on.
Yeah. Um, well, the high school is just a giant pathway because again, whatever math you have in seventh grade really just kind of dictate what the rest of your math career is like based upon that. I mean, certainly you, you have different things that you can go to, but you know, it's no secret. Success in Algebra one is the number one predictor in high school dropouts. Um, and, and uh, you can, there's a gentleman who used to be Lancaster, Jim Bohan, I highly respect. He was at IU thirteen and was a P Vas guru. He will tell you that if you want to take a look at how your students are going to do on the Algebra one Keystone exam, take a look at what their sixth grade ELA, PSSA scores were. So there is a tremendous amount of research coming out about how a student's ELA, reading and write ability has an impact on their success in mathematics right now. So even when we talk about looking at students in math right now, we have to be making those connections. You know, and as I go forward, you know, one of the things that I've been interested in looking at is the science classroom because there's so much common language between math and science that we use. But we also use different language for the same thing. We might use a trend line in science class, but use a line of best fit in math, the kids never see the connection. Talk about linear equations, but then we talk about F equals MA and never see the connection there. So kids, their brains silo loose things and they never make those synergistic connections, which is what you want high school kids to do. So you know, again, looking at the whole child and how those things connect is really vital, moving beyond, you know, those fourth, fifth grade years. I share your, I empathize with you. My son's in seventh grade and like I said, I, I see it, you know? Um, and, and I got his results at the end of sixth grade and I was very surprised in, in how he performed. Uh, and not in a good way. So you know, certainly my ears started ringing and I made phone calls and you know, that's why I'm happy to be a part of this, so.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for, thank you.
Dr. Hoyt, you gonna go? Yeah, I just wanted to verify something real quick, I apologize. So when you said the, the classroom diagnostic tool, you said seventh grade, but is that K through?
Free. It's grades.
Three through seven?
It's grades three through eight plus the Keystone.
Okay.
Yeah. It's made by D R S.
Okay, and?
And it's free.
Yeah, oh, and it's free? I like that, okay. Um, and currently you didn't see any, we don't have data, a lot of, so currently like what?
No, there's, there's that in there for STAR, like I, I didn't get into the student data yet, yet whatsoever. I just um know what kind of data is being collected. And, and one of the questions I asked the teachers um was, and I think Dr. Haller shared that more of the nitty gritty things in the data questions I asked, like, you know, on a scale of one to five, how comfortable, like, do you look at your math data? Do you look at your math data and, and, and tailor it to whole class? Or do you look at your math data and then start to group kids based on that? And it was more in the middle, near the back, so um moving, you know, going a next level deeper. It's okay, well, what math data are you looking at and what decisions are you making on those things? And are you looking at multiple criteria too? I mean, we all know that kids go through a lot of stuff. And I, you know, your dog days, your dog dies today, you're going to take a PSSA tomorrow. That PSSA score is not representative of who you are as a child. So that multiple criteria is also really important for a student. And if somebody's dog died, I'm really sorry, I didn't even use that sentence.
That actually did happen to us.
I'm sorry.
But I know, but I totally understand. That's why I just threw out my dog's PSSAs.
I was just like, there's. Assistant principal for four years, so that was a crash course in law enforcement detective work and just tremendous needs of kids. So I certainly empathize with a lot of those things.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Hoyt, I guess I'll start. You did answer a question of mine though. I wanted to see whether or not you had got into student data and you said you had not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Um, and as far as typically when you do assessments, how much PD time do you recommend for mathematics?
Um. I, you know, I think with teachers right now, given the status of what they're in, mo- it's not about time, it's about quality, right? Um, you know, teachers want to be, want to be given things that they need so that they can turn around and do. They don't want somebody to come in and be pie in the sky and not realize, there's a lot of PD that's out there, but they forget what it's like to be in the classroom right now. Um, and that's something I'm always cognizant of, so I try to keep it short, specific, targeted, actionable, observable so that if a PD is given, say I give a forty-five minute to one hour PD, I have the opportunity to come in and take a look at that, provide feedback and see what's next. I don't think anything over three hours is really valuable unless there's action planning time given in that. So you know, I, I know one of the things that's being looked at is the, the, you know, moving forward, you know, what, what can PD look like for, you know, half days, things like that possibly? That is the perfect model to go to. I worked in a district um where we did on the spot flex sessions. So if we saw that there was a need, and it was myself, an ELA supervisor at the time, who was amazing as science supervisor. If we saw there was a need, we gave teachers flex time. So you come to this, we'll offer this flex session three to four, four to five. You come to it, that counts as one of your hours for one of the May PD visits you get up. That was something they needed at the time that they could use. And now with the advantage of, I do a lot of development of, of sessions on, online now so that teachers can view on their own time, but then have that opportunity to collaborate with other teachers across the county and then have me come in to take a look at it. So I really went off on a tangent there, I'm sorry. But the idea is, is that I think for your new teachers who really need it, about three hours is good for them because that's really essential. Um, whereas you know, when you look at teachers who have been teaching, I think little one hours across the way, really, really powerful and helpful for them. But also the thing is giving choice too. So offering multiple different things, not one, because the needs for a third grade teacher may be very different than the needs of a seventh grade teacher. Obviously they are, so what can you do to offer them?
Um, and we, I mean, obviously K through four, they're blended classrooms. You know, back in the eighties and nineties, we had, you know, grades four through six within elementary and they were rotational. You know, so you, you went to your groups, you went to specific math classes. Um, do you feel that's something we might need here again in fourth grade considering the fifth, the fifth and sixth grade are, you know, in Reifton now? And fourth just stays within their classroom with their blended students.
I think it's something to look at, you know, I, I, I do because there is truly an art when somebody specializes in something. And now with that, that's not something to look at just math. As, as passionate as I am about math and as I'd love to talk about math, 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 you have to look on that, how will that help ELA? How will that help science? You know, can you pigeon science and math together and ELA and social studies? Cause you take a look at what are the needs in social studies right now? It's not what's the capital of Pennsylvania, it's how can you write to a prompter? Given the situation, how can you? Given the situation, how can you respond to that, which is citing evidence from the text in the E L A classroom? So, so many connections that can be made for kids, and if you specialize in something like that. But I mean, if that's not the direction that, that the district is gonna go in, I understand that as well. You also have to do with what's, what's best for, for the kids in the district as well.
I just look at it, you know, you've, you've got, you know, twenty-seven kids in a class at all different levels, you know, and you're teaching the same. Information to the students who learn on all different levels. So you might take five minutes out of your time. Work with one child, one child might need ten minutes. I think, and you might recommend the small groups, I think that's.
Right, and that's where that, the quality of the assessment data that you collect allows you to frame your groups in your classroom, so. Take, for example, second grade, if you are doing subtraction with regrouping is your skill in second grade. If my assessment data tells me that I have students who can't even subtract, I'm going to have a group where I'm working on just subtraction. With maybe single digit with those kids. Another group is doing subtraction without regrouping, and another group of students is doing subtraction with regrouping. Some of those students may be with me as the teacher, others might be working independently on extramath or on Dreambox, whoever it may be. Or watching instructional video that was created by the teacher, and others might be working on independent work. That's the way math looks. Is looking right now. That's a lot of the work I'm doing in the county, county, something called guided math right now, so. Um, and it's, it's giving students what they need. There's a lot of kids who are sitting in math classrooms right now. Who are either behaviorally compliant, have no idea what's going on, and when the teacher goes, do you understand what's going on, they go. And you have other kids who have no idea what's going on and see that I have this in my hand, and I'm going to throw it at somebody because I want to go to the principal's office. Because I don't want to be here anymore because I don't know what's going on. So, same type of child, they just react to it in a very different way.
You just described two of my children, so, that's where I was gonna kind of go with that. But no, and, and I think too, it's, it's important that the teacher, you know, every, they only have, what, thirty minutes, thirty, forty minutes in math? Was it nine, sixty, seventy? And is like the morning time, is that the best time to teach?
Best time to, to, to give math is in the morning, which is, um, uh, you know, again, looking at your schedule in elementary is essential. There's a big difference between teaching math right after a special or right before a special, or right before snack or right after snack. Those who've been in elementary. Snack's a big deal, you know, and trying to get that snack organized is a big deal, you know, and when kindergarten math, if you have a half hour for math and you have that in there. Math might only be twenty minutes long. Those lessons are engineered to be sixty to seventy-five minute lessons, just so you're aware. So, you know, that's something to take a look at it too, when you talk about the word fidelity, which is a lot that comes to mind with the math resource.
I was just gonna ask about what your recommendation would be, um, to look at the gaps because of, you know, um, time off. But I think you just answered that in saying that it needs to be small group instruction, it needs to be differentiated for our students, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing else?
Alright, well, thank you again very much for your time. Um, I, I, I do look forward to working with you in the future. I am your strongest advocate as a parent, you know, whatever I can do to support any parents, my contact information is in there and, uh. Um, I, I love helping kids and working with teachers, it's something I'm really passionate about, so. Uh, but I hope all of you have a wonderful holiday, and if there's anything that myself or the IU can do for you moving forward, don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoyt, for your time tonight, I appreciate that. Um, Dr. Howar, what, what is the hope for the next step?
So, uh, Dr. Hoyt and I talk quite frequently about math and next steps. And, um, we've worked out somewhat of a game plan as far as we see the next steps, as Dr. Hoyt coming in. Uh, without administrators going into classrooms, because when an administrator comes along, then it becomes evaluative. Instead of just a process where he can see what, what does it look like, what does instruction look like? And that's what we're trying to really get. Um, a sense of. So the teachers are, are honest and forth, forthright with their feedback. Um, we are also looking very closely at our, our district calendar for, uh, next year, and I'll be presenting one for the. Board to review at the committee of the whole meeting when we come back. You'll see that it is a big departure from what we've done in the past. Because we are adding a significant amount of professional development to the calendar. As of now, teachers have two flex days. Um, that they can choose to do or they can choose not to. Uh, we have two days before the school year begins, but that's dedicated towards. Um, getting classrooms, uh, ready. And then we only have three other days, really, um. One in October, one in November, and then the one that's in March. And given the, the need of what needs to happen in math. Coupled with E L A, knowing that the next generation science standards are coming down the pike. There's, there's a lot of work to be done, and the best people to do it is our teachers. Um, with the assistance of individuals like Dr. Hoyt, who are experts in their field and can guide. Um, guide that work, which is the thing that I think is, has been the most lacking. Um, some of the things that we're experiencing right now, right now are. Um, a result of the way the program was most likely put in a number of years ago, when you put in a new program, especially in math, you should really do. Uh, uh, almost like a gap needs assessment, so you can see what, um, students are, what they were learning previously. You have a new program coming in, so you could fill those, those gaps, um, as the program came in. That, that didn't happen. Um, so now you're starting to see kids who have now, um, gone through the grades and, and there's been gaps that have been created. And in addition to that, we've gone through a pandemic, which the last one was a hundred years ago. So, um. It's not something that we've really seen in, in education before. So there is a lot of work to be done. Our teachers are actually excited and anxious. To do this work, they've been asking to do it. Um, they want to move quickly with it, but they simply just don't have the time to do it. And if we want to be able to make a difference, we have to be able to provide that time for them, um, with the guidance of, of Dr. Hoyt. Um, so that's, that's where we are right now with definitely getting, um, Josh into the classrooms. Working one-on-one with, uh, teachers, looking at data analysis, uh, having a data analysis protocol is critically important. And then looking at the data that, that we have to make sure that we are making the appropriate adjustments and not just. Kind of shooting in the dark because we think that this is what needs to be done. Um, so that's, that's where we are with the planning stages. Um, not coming in just yet, we haven't gotten that far, we wanted to see, um, we wanted the board to hear this information. And have an, an, an understanding of where we are as a district and what our needs are in math. Uh, but the calendar, you will see, um. You'll see next month, and then once I have a, a calendar established for next year, we'll be able to do some long-range planning. And then make some short-term goals as well.
Thank you. The next on the agenda would be a mandating the agenda, and we're not, so we're gonna move to the superintendent report, Dr. Howar.
Thank you, Dr. Herring, and again, I'd just like to thank Dr. Hoyt, uh, for coming in and, and helping with this process. Um, just personally, I, I think he is very, a very valuable part of our community and always willing to. Um, help and, and provide advice, and I thank the IU for, um, having individuals like Dr. Hoyt on their staff to provide school districts. Um, with the support and assistance that we need for our students, so, so thank you, Josh. Um, I would also like to remind everyone that our next budget workshop is this Wednesday, December twenty-first, at Loraine Elementary School. Um, it will be at six o'clock and the meeting will, uh, be in the library. Um, and it will include a tour of Loraine Elementary School. Loraine is a little bit unique in the district as it's only, it's our only building that's. All on one floor. Um, I'd also like to thank our music department for the wonderful winter concerts that they have been hosting at each school. And I would like to acknowledge our students for their hard work and dedication to learning the songs. I can only imagine the hours of practice that has taken each one of them, um, to learn the songs for their performances. And of course, to our parents, uh, for their support of our music program. And I'd like to thank the school board, uh, for their support of the Exeter Township's, uh, music program. It's, it's a very important part of the, uh, the history here in, in Exeter. Um, lastly, I'd like to recognize a former, uh, Loraine student, his name's Robbie Taffarello. Um, I had the good fortune of meeting him as a kindergarten student as his principal. Robbie is now a senior and. Uh, had an opportunity this year to be an intern with Mr. Luckinville, um, through the high school internship program. Uh, and when I went to the seventh grade concert, uh, Robbie, uh, had an opportunity to conduct. Uh, one of the songs, uh, for the seventh grade band, and I have to say, it was, it was very cool, it was very cool to say. So, and I got to speak to him a little bit after and, um, he asked me to give me some, give him some feedback. Um, uh, he wanted me to come into the classroom and give him some feedback, because he's very excited to go to school, and I believe he's going to pursue education and. God only knows, we need, we need good educators out there, so I was excited to hear that. Um, now for a topic that everyone knows that I really dislike talking about, and that's inclement weather. So, thank you for our families and their understanding. Um, it is very challenging to make these calls, and I have learned over the years as an Exeter resident. That just because my street happens to be clear, that does not mean that Church Lane and Dowrick Road and the other streets in the area. Which we sometimes refer to as up on the mountain are clear and safe. Um, therefore, we do base the call on what's safe for everyone. So therefore, in an, if, in an effort to limit the days off, we did reintroduce the three-hour delay. And, um, hopefully that will stop us having to call off school. However, if we do need to close, like we did last week, um, we will be using traditional snow days first. Um, this year, we had four traditional snow days built into the calendar, and if unfortunately, we would need to use all of those days. And I'm crossing my fingers that we don't, that's when we will shift to flexible instruction days, or also known as, as virtual days. And, um, lastly, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holiday, and it's my wish, um, that you're able to spend the time with those. Uh, individuals, those family members who are important to you and, and bring you joy. So, thank you, and, and that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Howar. Um, next would be public comment. No one has signed up, so we would move on to board minutes. If there's no objection, we'll adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's board meetings. November second, twenty twenty-two special voting meeting and board committee of a hall meeting, as well as November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two board voting meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Next is the treasurer's report and payment requests. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve in November twenty twenty-two treasurer's report. And payment request dated November twenty-second to December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Hearing no objections, the treasurer's report, payment requests are approved. Next is on the agenda. Board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three. It is recommended that the board of school directors set board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three as per the attached list. Second, thank you. It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next is education committee, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Um, four items on the agenda. The first two do not require any, um, board action enrollment report. And field trips within a sixty-mile radius. The first item, item C, that does require board action. Uh, it's recommended that the board of school directors approve the following field trips beyond the sixty-mile radius. The indoor track and field team will be traveling to the Armory in New York City for a meet on December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And the last item, item D, we have several motions, uh, it's recommended that the board of school directors approve. Following staff conferences. There are, I believe, five there this time.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Uh, item two in this list, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the attached senior high school. Soaring Eagle and Soaring Eagle corrections for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. We had a, a very detailed, uh. And clear description of this last time from, uh, Mr. Kemp.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Number three is recommended that the board of school directors approve the staffing agreement with G H R Education to provide nursing and paraprofessional support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just, just a question, and I know we discussed this last time. The, um, the two categories here, nursing. Could, uh, I guess it would be you, Mrs. Harris, the, the paraprofessional support, could you just, a sentence or two on that?
Sure thing. We're short-staffed in both areas. Uh, the nursing specifically is for individualized student nursing. Um, for students who have one-on-one nursing needs. Um, the positions have been very difficult to fill, so, just like we use. Um, another agency called Aviana to provide us with substitute nurses and things like that. This is just another agency that can provide us with those services if we need them.
And the, uh, the paraprofessional, is that the same thing?
They have short-staffed, unable to fill those positions.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, all in.
Sorry, I just had a question too. It, it, it's referenced in the agreement, um, under the title next, that paraprofessional in the pay scale. R B T, is that registered behavioral technician? Is that what that stands for?
That was perfect, Mr. Mount.
Okay, thank you. I did not Google that, that just came right out of my head.
That's perfect.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And finally, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve a tuition agreement between Elwin Opportunity School. And the Exeter Township School District for special education services for one student for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. At a cost of four hundred eighty-one dollars a day or a total of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Dr. Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Personnel committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, first up is the A job description approval. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the updated. Attached job descriptions for the director of operations and the supervisor of operations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just had a quick, um, question. Um, as I read through the two job descriptions, um. I was looking for some reference to, um, who would be responsible for things like trash disposal and recycling? Now, I didn't see anything in either of these job descriptions, uh, Mr. Fike. I just wondered if you. Uh, if, if that's, if there are, if that's assigned to these folks or whether there's someone else to be responsible for?
Uh, we contract that annually.
Who's responsible for seeing that, that it's, you know, it's overseeing to make sure that it all, that it's done appropriately?
Pretty much everyone, but it's really the building's, um, administrator's gonna tell us if it's not being done. Uh, we're, we make sure it is being done, but, you know, it's the contractor or whatever. Um, but the building administrator will tell us each building.
If we wanted to get an assessment, uh, of particularly something like recycling, you, who would be, who would be our? Contact person for that? Who would be in the best position to be able to speak to that?
The director of operations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Under B, appointment of school board treasurer, is recommended that board of school directors appoint Kristen Graham. As the treasurer for the Exeter Township School District for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Effective December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, with a yearly stipend of five thousand one hundred and eight dollars prorated.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
C, under personnel committee consent agenda, we will start with number one, resignations. It is recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies. The following personnel items. Number one, resignation, support staff A, B, and C, extracurricular A.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items under number two, appointments. Certified staff A, B, and C, support staff A through G, substitute teachers A through C. Guest teachers A and B, and extracurricular A and B.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items under number three, change of status. Certified staff A and B, support staff A, B, and C.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items under number four, leaves of absence A, B, and C.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Finally, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items under number five, the attached list of course requests.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that concludes my report. Thank you.
If I could just um, hey, hey, recognize that Tracy and Brianna are both here in the audience tonight. Um, so we welcome both of you to the Exeter Township School District and we're very excited that you chose to work here with us.
Yes, welcome to the family. Next on the list is Finance, Facilities, and Audit Committee, Mr. Mall.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. I only have one item on the consent agenda, and that's for item number one. Budget transfers in the amount of two hundred and three thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-four uh, sixty-nine cents.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Uh, thanks, Dr. Herring. It's uh, recommended that the school, uh, the Board of School Directors approve the following um, policies for um, second reading, policy eight oh five point two, and policy two oh one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thanks, Dr. Herring. That's all for my report.
Thank you. Athletics and extracurricular activity, Mrs. Wilson.
Hello, good evening. Um, I just wanted to update you. There are still a few winter concerts this week, I guess, because um, of snow days. So um, the orchestra and the chorus and band are uh, this week, um, Tuesday and Wednesday at the high school. Also, tomorrow will be the second annual um, craft fair for the Spanish club at the high school. Um, and then also Lorraine and Awatton Creek, I believe, have their winter concerts this week. Um, from Mr. Legath, I would like to share that on Saturday, December tenth, um, the Exeter Township Cheerleaders um, took first place in Large Varsity Game Day and first place in Small Varsity. And then on Saturday, December seventeenth, at Central Dolphin East, um, they got first place in Competitive Spirit. And they will be moving forward to the P I double A Cheerleading Championships at Hershey on January twentieth and twenty first. Uh, the boys' basketball, boys' and girls' bowling, um, are all off to two and O sport starts. And um, all of our winter sports are off to a good start, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. ECEF, Dr. Batler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, so ECEF hosted their second annual Shop with a Teacher event at Vas- Boskov's last week. So hopefully you were able to see it on Facebook. It was fabulous. Um, we thank Bo- Boskov's, Burke's Hometown Heroes, and Bruno's for their support, as well as the Exeter staff for shopping and wrapping gifts with our twenty-five Exeter students. Also, last week marked our shoe event for fifty-five students in need. This was thanks to a grant from AXA as well as many generous donors. We'd like to thank the K to the six Exeter students too that helped raise twenty-three hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents through their building-wide coin drives for our Student Outreach Fund. Um, it's amazing what a great motivator recess is, I'd just like to say. And last but not least, um, EITC donations are steadily rolling in. Thanks to Vist for their thousand dollar donation, taking our total this year to twenty-six thousand dollars. That's all for me.
Thank you. BCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Fiddler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, this time I actually have something beyond the JLC briefs uh that you all got. The uh, BCTC has some students who are developing, or they have developed um, parts for the International Space Station. Uh, BCTC is one of four schools in Pennsylvania to participate. Um, one, one of three in manufacturing. And what they did uh, was working with NASA. It's called the HUNCH Program. High school students united with NASA to create hardware. And they created uh, um, handrails for the International Space Station. It did so within all of the tolerances that NASA requires uh, right here in in Burke's County. A lot of computer work. Program was developed in two thousand and three. And um, I think about that, think about putting that on your resume for your next job. So anyway, that's uh, something very exciting uh, coming from BCTC.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hamburger, BCIU and Legislative Liaison.
Thanks, Dr. Herring. Uh, BCIU uh, Board did not meet in December, so no, no report uh, for December. The next um, scheduled meeting for BCIU Board is uh, Thursday, January nineteenth. In terms of legislative reports, just a few things out of Harrisburg I'd like to report. Um, the uh, twenty-one, twenty-two session of the General Assembly ended on November thirtieth. Um, with the selection of leadership in both parties uh, in the House and the Senate. Um, Republicans will continue to maintain majority control of the Senate. However, the majority control of the House for the new session is in the balance uh, pending the outcome of three special elections in in Allegheny County. And they'll begin to be held in January. Um, one is the, is filling the seat of Representative Anthony DeLuca, who passed away posthumously after the election. Technically, uh, this gave the Democrats a one hundred and two to one hundred and one seat advantage. So uh, both parties will be holding one hundred seats when the new session begins uh, on January the third. Um, and with this evenly divided House, the special election date will be set for uh, February the seventh. Uh, so those other elections that are being scheduled, one would be to replace uh, PA Representative Summer Lee uh, Delaware County. She won her bid for the twelfth congressional uh, district for the US House. And the other vacancy is Representative Austin Davis, who as you probably know is our new Lieutenant Governor. Um, so his seat needs to be filled as well. Um, all of these three seats in uh, Allegheny County are primarily uh, heavily demo- democratic districts. And the assumption is that the Democrats will prevail in the, in the special election, thereby holding that House majority. Um, so the new, the new, the new structure for leadership uh, in the Senate, uh, majority uh, uh, President Pro Tem will be Kim Ward. Uh, she's from uh, West Moreland County. Um, the uh, Senate Democratic Minority Leadership will be Jay Costa. Again, another legislator from uh, uh, Allegheny County. It's nice to hear that Judy Schwank has a leadership position in um, in the Senate, and she'll be the Democratic Policy Committee Chair uh, for the Senate. Uh, in the House, uh, the House Democratic Leadership Majority will be Joanna Mc- McClinton, who is a Democrat out of Philadelphia, and and the minority leadership will be Brian Cutler, uh, a Republican out of uh, Lancaster County. So uh, as things start, uh, the new year, this will be the new session, uh, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. And the beginning of that uh, new session is January third, two thousand twenty-three. So, be here before you know it. So that's all for my report, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. Township and Borough Liaison, Mr. Mall.
Yes, uh, Dr. Herring, I have a couple of things just to note here. Uh, at one of our prior meetings, I believe it was in November, um, the Board had asked to uh, receive information on uh, s- school bus violations in terms of drivers not uh, following uh, you know, stop rules or the stop arm uh, for any violations by drivers uh, not adhering to any of the rules of the buses. Uh, I did uh, file a right to no request and received the information back from the Police Department uh, through that. And we were able to find there were, there were two incidents uh, so far since the start of the school year. Both were early November, one on the second, one on the third. Uh, one of the drivers was cited. And the other was not identified. Just an update on that. Uh, also.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
So we have these cameras on our, on all of our buses, correct? So just out of curiosity, how do we not identify a driver if they have cameras? Because I presume that those cameras cost a lot of money to have on those buses. Do I'm, I'm not saying it was right or wrong, just more curious to know how, how we missed it.
That's a good question. I don't know.
The, the camera got the license plate, but doesn't tell who the driver is if it's run away.
Gotcha. Makes sense. So we, so we was able to identify the plate then.
Right. Gotcha. But you can't cite the individual.
You can't prove who the driver is.
Understood.
That makes sense. Thank you. Uh, the, the other item I just want to update the Board on, uh, the, I have mentioned the township is in the budget process. They do have a hearing scheduled for uh, next Monday, December twenty-seventh, to adopt the final budget. The proposal as it stands currently is uh, no tax increase proposed. And uh, that's through the use of uh, taking funds out of their uh, reserve balance, uh, which contains a lot of the proceeds from the wastewater treatment plant. So that's, that's all I have on my end, Dr. Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Next would be public comment, but no one's signed up. So is there anyone here from the Board that would like to be heard at this point?
I'll speak. Um, I just want to thank um, Exeter Community Education Foundation for all the work they've done this year, helping our students and our staff and our school district. Um, they've done a lot of great things for our community, raised a lot of money. And these last two, um, the Shop with a Teacher and the Stepping Up for Students, um, they're amazing. And we helped a lot of great students and community members. And if anyone is interested in the community, um, helping out, I would encourage you to learn more about what the Community Foundation does, as well as check out their Facebook page and learn and look at, to, to see all that they do. Um, is it Exeter Cares? Yeah, is that where you go if you wanna make a donation?
Well, actually, Dr. Hoyt can speak to that because he is also on the Board and just redesigned our website.
You did? Okay, yeah.
So, Dr. You have to go to the mic, Dr. Hoyt.
Okay. No, I just wanna, I thank you for that.
That was, that was perfect.
No. Okay. User-friendly. Yeah, I was gonna say, because I know, um.
And on the Facebook page, that, you, on the Facebook page, you can click on your, on the link to get, that's how I got there, just so you know. Yeah, it was easier for me to go onto Facebook and then click.
And what's?
Right.
And what's that link again? ExeterEducationFoundation.org or dot com. I just wanted to say it in the microphone because if you're listening, you're not going to be able to hear you. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a footnote to that. Um, and if you get a nice check from Santa Claus, uh, send some of it to the ECEF.
Dr. Herring, I just have a comment too. Uh, I don't know whether we have publicly recognized Amy Lutz for her contribution. Amy has been the uh, Executive Director of the Ed Foundation for several years now, and she's recently resigned from that position. But I, I, I don't want another, word being to go by without at least kind of commenting upon the fact that she's been a tremendous acts, ass, asset to this organization, uh, to the community. Uh, I don't think she gets paid nearly as much as she's worth, you know, a, a part-time position that I'm sure she spends hours and hours involved in. And she's been, I think, the primary person responsible for seeing that the Ed Foundation is, is vibrant. It's strong. It continues to be a source of pride, you know, and, and we rely upon them for helping to fill the the, the void in many of these unique areas where we don't normally have budget accommodations. So um, publicly, I just want to thank Amy, you know, for everything. Wherever you are, Amy, uh, for the work that she's done and for the tremendous person and, and, and partner she's been in public education here in, in Exeter.
Thank you for saying that, Dr. Hamburger. All the Board members are all shaking their heads yes, because I, we all agree, definitely. Um, anyone else? After we adjourn the board meeting, we'll be, we'll be meeting in executive session. Our next board meeting will be on Tuesday, January third, at six PM for a Committee of a Whole. Hearing no objections, we'll adjourn. Have a happy and safe holiday, everyone.